Good evening. Welcome to the Cape Charles Town Council FY 2022 Budget Public Hearing, Regular Meeting, Executive Session, and Council Emergency Preparedness Training Session, July, June 17, 2021. Can I get a roll call?
Buckholz President.
Bennett President.
O'Brien President.
Grossman President.
Fulmer President.
Let me know we've established a quorum. Can we all stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all other.
All right. Item three, public hearing. I did a notice of public hearing from Municipal Corporate of Cape Charles fiscal year 22 proposed budget with real property tax and utility rate increases. Following are the estimate, receipts, and expenses of Municipal Corporation of Cape Charles for fiscal year 2022. The Town Council will hold a public hearing tonight at 6:30 PM at Cape Charles Civic Center, 500 Tasswell Avenue, to receive verbal and written comments on all proposed disbursement as well as tax rate increases. Written comments can be submitted prior to the hearing via email to clerk@capecharles.org or hand delivered to Town Hall. Verbal comments can be provided during the public hearing. The proposed fiscal year 2022 budget and all tax increases will be discussed and brought to a vote at a special meeting on June 24, 2021. For additional detail or explanation, please visit Town website at www.capecharles.org under agendas amendments/TownCouncil. Mr. Hose is going to speak a couple words before the public hearing starts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a couple of things I want to put on record before the public speaks, just so they have the benefit of the information and for you as well. First, there will be a technical change next week on the budget regarding the ARPA funds. We currently budget them as a revenue in next year's budget, but we will receive them this fiscal year. The federal government required that they be put forward within 30 days, and that was on May 28th. So it will change from a revenue to a reappropriation in the budget. Minor thing, I just wanted to let you know that will be a change from what's before us tonight. Additionally, I've met with some members of the community regarding the TOT transient occupancy tax, and they asked me to check on something and report back. They wanted to know, they were curious, the current proposal is to raise the percentage from 3.7% to 4% and add a flat tax of $1 per room per night for hotels and B&Bs and $4 per night for residential rentals. They wanted to know what the percentage increase would have to be to capture the same revenue and eliminate the flat fee. So I did the math for them, and that would be 6.14%. So if we raised the overall rate to 6.14%, that would capture approximately the same revenue. For reference, the mean for the entire state of Virginia for towns is 5%. So that would be significantly over the mean for the town.
And then we still have the 2% Northampton County.
Correct. None of that changes here. Now, the alternative to increasing the TOT percentage, the only other place to go would be real property tax, so I did that calculation as well. If you kept the TOT rate at, go from 3.7 to 4, eliminate the flat tax and take the revenue from the flat tax and move it over to real property tax, that would have the net effect of increasing the real property tax by 2.6 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. That has the effect on a $400,000 assessment, not appraisal, but an assessment of just over $100 a year. So that'd be like $104 a year on that house. It would be the increase over the current proposal. Our current proposal right now is to increase real property taxes at a rate of 15%. It's a 15% increase. If we shift this over to it, that increase becomes 24%. So that's just the background information. Oh, the other thing that wasn't clear, I want to make sure it's clear to the public, is that should you prove the current proposal for the TOT increases, all of it, percentage flat rate, any of it, it doesn't take effect until January 1 of '22. It will not affect this year's bookings. So as currently proposed, it wouldn't go into effect until January 1 of '22. But I just wanted to put all that on the record, Mr. Mayor, prior to the hearing. Thank you for the time.
Can I add one thing to that, just so people know? This is one, the TOT is a pass-through tax. It's a collection, they pass through. Real property tax will hit and impact every single homeowner. There's a difference, so, once a pass-through collection tax, so just keep that in mind.
Mr. Lemon, you're up.
Okay. Um...
Mayor.
We have Ann Valentine.
Excuse me. One other thing, are we going to stick to the three-minute, or are we going to go complete the reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Ann Valentine? Okay.
Come on up, come on up to Mike Valentine. Please state your name and your address for the record.
Ann Vantine, 549/551 Monroe Avenue in Cape Charles. I own a duplex with a co-owner, and we rent one side of the duplex currently, and we've been in the process of painting and staining floors and stuff and getting the other side ready to rent hopefully this summer. Now, my question, I think pertains to what you were saying. From what I understand, and I'm relatively new to this, but on VRBO HomeAway, the platforms we use to rent, and you say pass-through, which means we can pass through these increases to the renters. Our problem is that renters balk at fees and are less likely to have an issue with taxes. The flat fee, now is that a flat fee per house or per room?
It's a per room for hotels and B&Bs, per house for residential units.
Okay. So we pass that $4 on, say, to, we increase our rental by $4, we are then taxed on that $4 as income. Well, it would affect, essentially come to that the way the platform works. So if, say we charge $100 and we raise it to 104, that's going to show up as income, which is then taxed as income. So we're not able to fully pass that $4 on. Percentage works fine, it's the flat fee that is causing a little concern as far as that goes, because then we get taxed on it, and we don't fully get to transfer it over. So I just wanted to say that's my concern, anyway.
Thank you very much.
Hi, here we are, Raphael, 3 Colony Drive.
As we all know, the taxes are based on the assessed value of the property, both land and dwelling. Cape Charles has seen an exponential increase in new housing construction, and I'm curious as to know how many new homes have been given the certification of occupancy since 2012. That's not identified in the budget, and as we know, is the values of assessments go up per dwelling when it was, you know, when they were getting assessed just for the land, and as they get occupancy, the assessments go up for the dwelling. County assessments have increased astronomically. I found a year after I moved in, my dwelling assessed value went up 75%, and the county uses, per the county, they have told me they use the MLS as basis for reassessments. With these increased assessments, and assessments now including new dwellings at the increased values, given the real estate market, I'm a little concerned that the town has said they have not increased taxes in over a decade. While percentage to the $100 assessed value may not have gone up, the amount of revenue brought in by the real estate tax has and continues to grow, given the growth in Cape Charles. The budget is almost $1.6 million over the 2019 budget and $3.4 million over the 2020 budget, which, understanding given the reductions from COVID. Nowhere in the budget does it show where the windfall, nowhere that I can see, does it show where the windfall from 2020 went. It shows a 197% increase for the town planner expense over 2020. It's a 106% increase over the 2019, which seems astronomical in budgetary terms, that there's that kind of increase. It also indicates that permanent homeowners are being, like you mentioned, Andy, that the permanent homeowners are going to have to, if done by the way Mr. Hosey says about increasing or putting the flat taxes into real estate taxes, private homeowners are having to subsume the costs of commercial occupancies. I question why the commercial water and sewage rates are the same as residential rates, and the price per $1,000 or per 1,000 gallons above the minimum is the same.
Thirty seconds.
Pardon?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. There's a whole much more that I can give to Libby later, but it just seems that there's just such an astronomical increase in the tax. There's no correlation between what the budget is without the added tax in it, we'd have no representation there, you know, I would like to see that. So I just, I find the increase is astronomical, given it doesn't seem to take into account the new assessments coming online.
Okay, those are the only two that have signed up, but I do have a number to read into the record.
You got enough water?
I'm sorry. You sign up regularly, not the, yeah, Tree Advisory Board is regularly.
If she wants to speak, if she wants, is it, you want to speak on the budget?
No.
We are asking for money. Yeah. Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, just add her, too, please. Come on, come on up.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak. I'm Barbara O'Hare, 11 Randolph Avenue, and I'm representing the Tree Advisory Board. The Tree Advisory Board is requesting $1,000 be added to the Public Works Department budget to plant native trees in high priority areas and to use for small items such as a banner for our information table at town events. You may be aware that we recently were able to get Cape Charles declared a Tree City USA by the Arbor Foundation. There has been significant commercial, residential, and industrial development and redevelopment over the past few years that has resulted in a net loss of trees. The requested funds will help to reverse this trend, enhancing and increasing the town's family of trees and diversification of the tree canopy. The Tree Advisory Board has been acting in advisory capacity on requests for tree removal and related issues over the past year. The board is currently working on a Cape Charles tree planting plan, which will serve as a guide for the selection and location of new trees that would be purchased with these funds. And hopefully you are aware that we have been working with the town, the town staff, and I think we have done our best to make it a collaborative and cooperative relationship. The planning of new trees to replace many of those lost through development and those lost through age or disease directly supports the recently approved Cape Charles Strategic Planning Document with a vision to, quote, "preserve our natural resources now and for generations to come." Trees support the Plan for Coastal Resiliency, which is in there, and help to protect and improve public green open space infrastructure, which are stated goals of the plan. So we are hopeful that our requests for these funds will be approved, respectfully submitted by members of the Cape Charles Tree Advisory Board, which includes Joe Farrar, Phil Gekim, Jane McKinley, myself, Barbara O'Hare, and Christine Williams. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry I didn't understand.
All right, Ms. Lemon, you're up.
All righty. This first one is from Pat Tinkelman. Says, "One of the things I absolutely love about Cape Charles is that parking is free. It is something that helps maintain the small-town feel of the town. As a resident, I would rather see my property tax go up a small amount than have to start paying for parking." From Bonnie Moore, from Tom and Bonnie Moore, owners of 206 and 208 Madison Avenue. "We are aware of several decisions coming up soon regarding Cape Charles and wanted to share our thoughts and experiences with you. Thank you for taking the time to hear us out. We do not support paid parking along Bay Avenue and Mason Avenue. It will reduce shopping on Mason Avenue. It is not worth the nuisance of paying for and monitoring a parking spot, and people will use side streets to park instead. It will also be an administrative burden to the town. We do not support a nightly fee for tourists. Our three-bedroom house rents for a maximum of $335 a night, less than off-season, so for our guests, this is an additional tax of at least 1.2%. Adding a second type of tax is an administrative burden to the town as well as vacation homeowners. Differential taxes between vacation rentals and hotels, B&Bs, is unfair to guests and business owners. If you do decide to raise taxes on visitors, how would these funds directly benefit tourists' tourism? A great way to improve Cape Charles while increasing town revenue is to draw visitors in the off-season. Visitors generate revenue through TOT and spending at shops and restaurants. They frequent Cape Charles establishments far more often than residents and homeowners. Providing activities to draw them helps increase your revenues while making the town even more enjoyable for homeowners. Win-win. We support fair assessments of housing prices and property taxes that allow for a sustainable town budget, even if that means increasing the rate. We have never expected property taxes to remain flat while costs for running a town increase, especially if we are meanwhile benefiting from the increased value of our home. We do not support electric scooters. We have experienced them in other towns, DC, Memphis, and they create a trashy-looking town because they're left all over, and unsafe sidewalks and streets because they go too fast to be safe on sidewalks and too slow to be safe on streets. We have witnessed numerous accidents occur while visiting these cities. Cape Charles is completely walkable, and adding scooters will not increase mobility for anyone. Additionally, the streets and sidewalks are not smooth enough for a scooter. Trust us, we've tried with our kids. Sincerely, Tom and Bonnie Moore." This is from Rebecca Carrier. "We are the owners of 606 Jefferson Avenue. We operate as an Airbnb. We wanted to address our concerns regarding the potential tax increase in the TOT and per-night fee that is being proposed. As you know, vacation homeowners and their customers make up the majority of the revenue for the town. By increasing the taxes on this category, prices for vacationers will increase, and this could cause a decrease in demand resulting in net decrease in revenue for the town. We and other vacation homeowners have experienced an increase in rentals this year. The additional volume will already result in additional revenue to the town at the current tax rate. In addition, I call your attention to the disparity in proposed taxation rates between vacation homeowners and hotels. This disparity in rates does not exist anywhere else in Virginia and is inherently unfair to the largest revenue source. We request the following. One, no increase in taxes for vacation homeowners or their customers. Two, parity between vacation homeowners and hotels. Three, a detailed review of the current budget. There appears to be several line items that could be decreased or eliminated. Have a great day." This is from Beth Howells. "In light of some of the issues coming up for a vote, as of the fall of 2020, we have become repeat visitors to Cape Charles and adore this beautiful little town. When we're visiting, we always visit the shops on Mason, multiple restaurants, and dessert places, rent a golf cart, and of course, visit the beach and playground. We rent a vacation home when we come because there's more space for our small children and extended family. Paid parking on Bay Avenue and Mason Avenue would be a burden and would keep me from frequenting the shops on Mason Avenue. I would likely seek parking on side streets before taking the time and energy to attempt to pay and monitor a parking spot on Bay Avenue or Mason Avenue. We also worry our elderly family members would have difficulty navigating a paid parking system, which might dissuade them from shopping in the shops. Charging a nightly rental fee of $4 for vacation rentals feels like nickel-and-diming visitors. We understand if the transient occupancy tax needs to increase slightly, but both increasing the TOT as well as adding a nightly fee is too much. The rentals we stay in are less than $400 a night, meaning the proposed nightly fee is more than 1% tacked on to the cost of my stay. We love Cape Charles, but if vacationing there becomes too expensive, we will consider vacationing elsewhere. Increasing taxes for visitors should directly benefit them. We do not want the option of electric scooters in town. They create cluttered sidewalks and unsafe pedestrian and street traffic issues, especially when walking with young children. The town is so small that they are not necessary for getting around, and the sidewalks and streets are not maintained well enough to safely use a scooter. We would love more events outside of the summer season to draw us to Cape Charles. Every time we're in town, we visit many shops and restaurants and would love to see Cape Charles thrive outside of the summer season. Thank you. The Howells Family, Columbia, Maryland." From Philip and Jordan Dale. "As a business owner on Mason Avenue as well as the owner of two vacation homes in town, we have great concern about the proposed increase in the TOT and the addition of the flat rate fee applied with discrimination to vacation homeowners. Firstly, we feel the town has taken a narrow-sided approach to increasing the taxes-based revenue that was collected in 2020 and the budget deficit due to COVID-19. The same members of council and the town manager who denied homeowners the ability to rent their homes in the spring of 2020, closed the beaches for any activity during the same period above and beyond what was done by the governor, and canceled festive Fridays, are now facing the financial consequences of these decisions. The town has admitted that the property taxes were not properly raised to keep up with the increasing house prices. Why are the vacation owners being held responsible for this lack of planning and mismanagement of the town's finances? We respectfully request that they reconsider a rash move to increase taxes because of these actions. Our vacation rental homes are a small business, and all of these small businesses lost thousands of dollars last year due to the governor and the town's lockdowns. Without firm numbers, I hesitate to guess, but I would not be surprised if it reached in the $500,000 to $1 million range of revenue lost total. Most of the vacation rentals did not qualify for the loans and grants offered by the government to help offset revenue lost during COVID. Unlike the town who just received almost $1 million to help cover deficits and loss, we had to absorb these losses in revenue personally. Many of us feared losing our homes to foreclosure if the tourism did not return. It is ridiculous to assume that all the vacation rentals are cash cows with deep pockets to pull from. We have restoration costs, maintenance, and upkeep for 100-plus-year-old homes, bills, taxes, cleaning fees, and hefty mortgages to pay. We are families, many young and still working full-time, needing the rent revenue to pay the basic costs, and many vacation owners never see a profit, especially after the 2020 season. If taxes need to be increased at all, we are only in favor of increasing the top tax by a small percentage, other than adding the flat rate tax, rather than adding the flat rate tax added to the per-night stay. There are several reasons the flat rate fee does not help the town and the homeowners, nor does it treat the rental avenues fairly. Why are bed and breakfasts in hotels treated differently? In the entire state of Virginia, only six cities impose a flat rate fee, and only Cape Charles would distinguish between types. Why are all vacation rentals treated the same across the board? Some vacation rentals are only one or two bedrooms, but would pay the same flat rate tax as the other larger homes. This does not make logical sense, nor is it fair to those who have smaller homes. Another reason the flat rate tax is not a good choice is that it adds another avenue of responsibility to the vacation rentals to keep track of and pay. We are already burdened by all the state, local, and county taxing and the required accounting. It would also would add a new system that the town will have to manage, which would cause an increase in staffing needs and a computer tracking system of some sort.
Okay. It'll be printed in its entirety in the minutes.
Okay, this is from the vacation homeowners of Cape Charles. "We are a group of homeowners in Cape Charles who rent our homes out to vacationers. We are license-holding, rule-following vacation homeowners in the town of Cape Charles that seek to foster community building and good neighbor behavior. We love Cape Charles and love sharing our homes with friends and contacts who enjoy spending time and money in Cape Charles. Examples of our work as a group include donating $1,500 to Cape Charles Main Streets Festive Fridays, third highest donor after Bay Creek and Simpson Builders, raising $2,409 for Cape Charles Citizens for Central Park's 2021 Summer Concert Series, and collaborating with the town, a graphic for golf cart rules to be distributed throughout town. We're also planning several public events for all of Cape Charles, for example, the First Day on the Bay, January of 2022, which is received funds via a Northampton County Tourism Grant. We are concerned about the proposed increase in the town's transient occupancy tax, in particular, the differential nightly rate for hotels and bed and breakfast compared to vacation rental properties. If Town Council determines that an increase in taxes is warranted, we ask that it be applied uniformly across types of rentals by an increase in the percentage and not through a nightly fee. The proposed nightly fee treats some rentals unfairly. The proposed nightly fee is based on the incorrect assumption that the vacation home rentals are four-bedroom houses. Based on an analysis of Airbnb properties in Cape Charles, the average property on Airbnb, excluding B&B rooms advertised on Airbnb, is 3.38 bedrooms. This includes one-bedroom properties and two-bedroom properties that would be subject to an unfair $4 per night fee that does not accurately reflect the nature of their property. This fee would treat smaller vacation properties in town unfairly. Also, it is our experience that three, four, or five-bedroom houses are often rented by one couple. The number of bedrooms does not necessarily reflect the number of people staying there, so charging a higher per-night fee would impact these visitors unfairly. The proposed fee also does not consider the aspects of hotels in town. For example, the 700-square-foot loft rooms at Hotel Cape Charles with an eat-in kitchen are larger than several rental homes in town that are 500 to 600 square feet. The nightly fee would also leave tax revenue on the table by not taxing more expensive properties at a percentage rate. A $4 per night fee is equivalent to a 2% tax on a rental that charges $200 per night but is 0.8% tax for a rental that charges $500 per night. This provides a benefit for larger home rentals compared to smaller home rentals. The nightly fee would also provide a lower tax rate for hotels and bed and breakfast compared to vacation home rentals. A bed and breakfast that has four rooms booked will take in $968 in room rates and will pay a total of $4 in nightly fees, 0.4% tax rate, while a two-bedroom rental that charges $175 a night will also pay $4 in nightly fees, 2.3% tax rate. This type of differential treatment is unprecedented in Virginia and should not be done here in Cape Charles. If a top tax increase is necessary, we ask that you increase the tax rate and not impose a nightly fee." Gary and Sheila McKinney. "As full-time residents of Cape Charles, we ask you not to increase taxes on vacation home rentals. Like many residents, we first came to Cape Charles on a vacation and we fell in love. We now make Cape Charles our full-time home, and we appreciate the value that vacation home rentals bring to our town. Vacation home rentals bring a steady stream of visitors to Cape Charles that shop in our stores, eat in our restaurants, and patron our other businesses. Cape Charles is able to sustain businesses that could not exist but for these vacation rental visitors. Ice cream shops, candy stores, surf shops, and restaurants cannot survive on full-time residents alone. We are especially troubled about singling out vacation houses for a higher per-night fee than hotels and bed and breakfast pay. We should be welcoming these visitors to our wonderful town and encouraging them to spend money in our shops and restaurants, not hitting them with higher unfair taxes. A percentage tax that applies equally across the board makes much more sense." Dawn Dale. "As we originally discovered Cape Charles in 2012, we were looking for a place to spend time with our small extended family that was fairly close, no planes, where we could congregate in one area for evening and breakfast, not a hotel, and that had a family-friendly atmosphere, no Myrtle Beach. Cape Charles seemed to meet all of those requirements. After our first experience, we were hooked and rented the same house for two more summers since there wasn't much else available that would fit our family. The town was very rundown, with many houses severely in need of restoration or demolition. The school was boarded up, and there were very few places to eat or shop. In spite of this, the experience of a beach town without all of the big city problems convinced us to invest in a house on Randolph Avenue. We poured our lives into the restoration of that old house, working night and day until it was once again the beauty it was originally. We were not the only ones who saw the potential of, not only these houses, but Cape Charles itself. In short, we, the short-term rental homeowners, believed in you, the community of Cape Charles, enough that we were willing to invest..." enough that we were willing to invest in you. We were willing because we saw a vision of what the town could be and wanted to save what we could before there was nothing left to build on, and it worked. People took notice and told friends, HGTV profiled the town and its wonderful benefits, and the town began to flourish, all while retaining its small-town charm. Without all of the hard work, investment of money, and vision of the short-term rental owners, it couldn't have happened as it did, and the city council would now be searching for funds to keep a town running that was falling into serious decline. And now, after all of this, the city council is planning to punish these same owner, same homeowners by raising the taxes on these houses in an exorbitant fashion. The way that the taxes are being levied is clearly meant for the short-term rental owners to bear the largest load of the tax burden. Although the hotel and bed and breakfasts rely on tourism just as much as the short-term owners, they will enjoy the benefit of not having, not having to share that tax burden. The residents of the town are also enjoying the benefits of the increased tourism since all of the businesses and rentals bring in money for the town that they do not have to cover. With the houses full and the businesses busy, it would seem logical that Cape Charles has already seen an increase in revenue as never before. If there is a shortfall, then consider a small increase overall for everyone. Don't make it more expensive to vacation here. Tourists can go anywhere, but their visits here are what will keep this town thriving. Please reconsider the way that you're planning to tax all of us. Our homes and businesses are an essential part of this town, and we love being a part of it, but pursuing the large tax increase on only the vacation rental owners is a very discriminatory tax. Seems like a punishment, not a business decision. Thank you for considering our concerns." Janet Coggins. Says, "I heard that several issues were coming up for discussion, and as a frequent visitor, I wanted to share my opinions with you. We have been coming to Cape Charles for several years now, driving from Alabama to meet up with family from Virginia. We love the small-town feel and the clean and safe vibe the town has. The beach is perfect for families, and we especially love to watch the sunsets. We always rent a vacation home to accommodate our large family, and it gives us lots of options to play in the yard and cookout, et cetera. I don't think there needs to be any more fees tacked on to the cost of our rentals. They are high enough already. I think all parking should remain free. Surely this will keep, help keep traffic up at the local businesses. We love to just pop over for shopping and dining, and it keeps the small-town feel. We recently attended the street music session when we were there on Memorial Day and had a blast. Great job, everyone. The band was fabulous. Loved the chairs available, available for my elderly mom, her first visit, and being able to walk and get ice cream was fabulous. We'd love to see more activities all during the year. It's fun for the locals and visitors and keeps the town feeling vibrant and involved." Lastly, I'd like to give a stern warning about electric scooters. When we visited St. Louis two years ago, the tourists on scooters were awful. They buzzed right around pedestrians with no warning. Riders were inexperienced drivers, not following road or sidewalk rules. Then they threw them down and left them all over town. The worst part was at night when a scooter would come zipping out of the dark, oblivious to the curbs and other hazards, and running right in front of our cars. I don't know about their safety statistics, but I'm sure it can't be good. Let's keep Cape Charles a-walking and biking town. We love coming to visit, and I think your town is perfectly lovely. Keep up the good work. We're coming back in mid-July. Can't wait." From Cynthia Emrich and Tucker Van Dyke. "We're writing to share our views on the proposed changes to taxes associated with short-term vacation rentals in the town. As you're well aware, those of us who own and operate such rentals are already taxed significantly and by multiple jurisdictions, with 3.7% of gross receipts owed to the town, another 2% to the county, and 5.3% in sales tax, for a total of 11%. Each of these is likely to go up, adding an additional tax burden. Now you propose to add an additional, and we would stress unequal per-night tax of $1 a night for a hotel or bed and breakfast, but $4 a night for a vacation home rental. As you're likely aware, this type of unequal taxation between different types of vacation accommodations is unprecedented in Virginia, and we would argue that it is rooted in inaccurate assumptions. It is our understanding that you arrived at this proposal by assuming that the prototypical vacation rental home offers four bedrooms, when our review of all listings on Airbnb puts the average at three bedrooms. Further, as Mark Twain once famously wrote, 'There are lies, there are damned lies, and then there are statistics.'" What the statistic related to the number of rooms for a vacation home rental overlooks is the wide variation across vacation home rentals, both in their number of rooms and in their nightly rates. What this means in practice is that your proposal will hit much harder the owners of one- or two-bedroom rentals and/or homes with nightly rates at the modest, affordable end of the spectrum. This impact strikes us as patently unfair. The final point we'll make is that we hope the town will be wary of doing anything that will contribute to Cape Charles becoming out of reach for middle-class families. We are currently riding high as a tourist destination because we, we offer a very attractive alternative to far-flung destinations that require air travel due to a continued reluctance to travel by plane. We'd encourage you to push pause on the proposed additional taxes until you have a clearer sense of the true budget shortfall post-pandemic. 2020 was an aberration due to the pandemic. 2021 will be a very different year. Let's see what it brings before taking actions that may well have negative unintended consequences for our town. The group of vacation home rental owners in Cape Charles is passionate about our town, and we are increasingly banding together to make a positive difference, contributing to improvements in our beloved Central Park, supporting the efforts of the Cape Charles Main Street and other critical improvement efforts. Please don't do anything that sends a message that the town is not supportive of vacation home rentals. Singling out for an unequal tax sends exactly this type of message. Thank you for reading and take care." J. Scott Faircloth from the Sandlot House. "I am writing to oppose the proposed dual tax rate increase of vacation rental properties in Cape Charles. As proposed, the town of Cape Charles is considering both a percentage increase and an onerous flat fee rate of $4 per night. In addition to the increased tax burden, based on an arbitrarily increased rate, the $4 per night scheme would also place a significant and unfair accounting and regulatory burden on homeowners. Already, vacation homeowners are taxed at 11% with another 1% increase on the way, and of course, we must pay property taxes along with federal and state income taxes as well. Yet many of us operate on razor-thin margins, fighting for every dollar we can earn and expense we can save. Particularly during the height and fallout of COVID, our small operations suffered greatly. In fact, many vacation homeowners are still trying to make up for the massive revenue loss from COVID-related cancellations. And while we are taxed heavily, our contribution to the town budget doesn't stop there. While I am not privy to the numbers, I think it's safe, it's a safe assumption that vacation rental homes are responsible for generating a significant percentage of the sales, meals, and property taxes collected within the town. We bring people to the town who provide a constant influx of money spent and taxes paid. This in turn creates much-needed jobs for Cape Charles residents, in addition to employing countless tax-paying contractors, landscapers, and housekeepers necessary to ensure our operations run smoothly. In other words, we are a key stimulus to the town economy. To unnecessarily burden one of the prime economic engines of the town, particularly on the heels of a global pandemic, is shortsighted and a fool's errand. I understand there is a budget shortfall which may be exacerbated by the COVID pandemic. However, I encourage the town council to not kill their cash cow through overtaxation and overregulation. Instead, I would implore the council to close that gap by taking a closer look at, one, equitable property assessments across the entire town, two, cutting unnecessary expenditures from the town budget that were perhaps exposed as unnecessary by the COVID shutdowns, and three, supporting vacation homeowners in ways that recognize their invaluable role in the local economy by removing regulatory barriers and tax burdens, not increasing them. I'll close with the words of Ronald Reagan, who once famously said, "Government's view of the economy can be summed up in a few short phrases. If it moves, tax it; if it keeps moving, regulate it; and if it stops moving, subsidize it." To Reagan, overtaxation and overregulation inevitably led to the opposite of the intended effect. Ronald Reagan was right then, and he's right now, and I implore the town council, table this added tax burden until after the effects of COVID. To small businesses and to the town budget can be more fully understood. Thank you." Just a few more. This is from Harriet Berry. "We are repeat visitors to Cape Charles in both summer and off-season. When we're visiting, we always visit the shops on Mason, multiple restaurants and dessert places, rent a golf cart, and of course, visit the beach and playground. We rent a vacation home when we come because there's more space for our small children and extended family. Paid parking on Bay Avenue and Mason Avenue would be a burden and would keep me from frequenting the shops on Mason Avenue. I would likely seek parking on side streets before taking the time and energy to attempt to pay and monitor a parking spot on Bay Avenue or Mason Avenue. Charging a nightly rental fee of $4 for vacation rentals feels like nickel and diming visitors. We understand if the transient occupancy tax needs to increase slightly, but both increasing the tot as well as adding a nightly fee is too much. The rentals we stay in are less than $400 a night, meaning the proposed nightly fee is more than 1% tacked on to the cost of my stay. We love Cape Charles, but if vacationing there becomes too expensive, we will consider vacationing elsewhere. Increasing taxes for visitors should directly benefit them. We do not want the option of electric scooters in town. They create cluttered sidewalks and unsafe pedestrian and street traffic issues. The town is so small that they are not necessary for getting around. We just walk. Besides, the sidewalk and streets are not maintained well enough to safely use a scooter. We would love if there were more events outside of the summer season to draw us to Cape Charles. Every time we're in town, we visit many shops and restaurants, and would love to see Cape Charles thrive outside of the summer season. Please try and keep in mind your visitors to your wonderful town. I'd really hate to have to reevaluate our vacation plans and choose somewhere else." Jeff Palmore. "I'm writing about the proposed flat fee tax on home rentals in Cape Charles. My wife, two children, and I are frequent visitors to Cape Charles. We are also renovating a home in town to be able to visit more frequently. During our most recent visit to town, the four of us stayed in a hotel room. Other times, the four of us have stayed in a house. As I understand it, the proposed budget includes a new tax of $1 per night if the four of us stay in a hotel, but $4 per night if the four of us stay in a house. The justification this, to this, is apparently that the impact on the town is somehow four times more if the four of us are staying in a house than if we are staying at a hotel. There was mention of a house on Randolph charging $600 per night. A $4 per night fee actually gives the renter of this house a break on the taxes they pay. The flat fee amounts to a tax rate of 0.66% if you can afford to rent a $600 per night house, but is 2%, three times more if you rent a $200 a night house. A percentage rate that applies across the board to all properties is much more fair. This would collect more from those renting more expensive houses. Please don't impose this regressive tax. Instead, apply the same tax rate to everyone and help keep Cape Charles affordable for everyone." Okay, from Ken and Amy Buta. "I am writing to you to express my opposition to the proposed new per-night flat tax of $1 per night for a hotel or bed and breakfast room and $4 per night for a vacation home rental. I know that the town must increase revenues in order to provide the services we need. I think, I think that the increase in the tot is appropriate. While I object, what I object to is the unequal treatment of vacation homeowners compared to hotels and B&Bs. The chart below compares a percent of nightly revenue that different lodging types would pay under this plan. Clearly, that is not equitable." He's got a spreadsheet in here, which I'll print into the, the minutes. "I think a better solution would be to raise the tot past 4% to capture the needed revenue in a fair manner. Please keep in mind that we don't want to increase or decrease tourism or cause visitors to spend less in shops and restaurants. I know you have a difficult task ahead of you. I ask that you treat all members of our community equally." And then one came in by email. From Anna Lee. "Thank you for the many hours that went into preparing the proposed budget. My husband and I own a duplex at 107-109 Tazewell Avenue, where we live in one side and rent out the other side on Airbnb. We've had wonderful, respectful, and surprisingly quiet guests and have enjoyed sharing our town with visitors. Our visitors are almost exclusively families with two to four children who could not stay at a B&B and could not fit in one hotel room. Most do very little cooking in the rental and spend all their time at the beach or in restaurants and shops. 2021 will be a record-setting year for short-term rental taxes, and vacation rentals have played a critical role in that growth by allowing more total visitors and larger groups to stay for multiple days. I disagree with singling vacation rentals out for a special flat tax rate that is four times that of hotels and B&Bs, and I believe that this approach would set a precedent in Virginia. The $4 flat rate also assumes that all vacation rentals have four bedrooms, penalizing those with fewer rooms. Can you also please provide us with reporting to support the mention of increased labor costs in town related to managing vacation rental grievances and issues? This data will allow the vacation rental homeowners of Cape Charles Group to understand the number and type of complaints and work to address them. I also recommend revisiting real estate tax and considering a larger increase, given that it represents the lion's share of revenue and has not been increased since 2014. Town can offer a payment plan or consider a reduced rate for residents with hardships. Thank you."
Thank you, Debbie. Can I get a motion to close public hearing?
Before we close, can Debbie maybe, because there's a common misunderstanding about people not knowing about equalization? And I know in what I've been talking to people, there's been a common perception that our tax rate stays the same, and they don't understand the equalization aspect, that our rates have actually gone down in recent years to keep the income the same. So can Debbie explain that?
Well, the law says that we probably need...
Do I put you on the spot?
When we get the assessments from the county, we have to examine them and see if the tax revenue would be more than 1% of what it was the year before. And if it was, we, that's considered a tax increase. So in every year, the last 12 years, council has elected to reduce the tax rate so that we're getting the same revenue plus a 1% increase only for the last 12 years. So not only is it not been a tax increase, it's been really a net decrease. So the assessed values, as they increase in more properties, we do allow for a little bit of growth. But that is also, it's, it's not been as much as it would be had we been allowed to increase naturally. Does that help?
Can I ask a question? Is that equivalent to new houses coming online as well?
Yes. They, at the assessments are as of January 1st, so it's only 50% construction. At January 1st, that's all we'll be able to collect, even if they have the CO in September or August. And so we won't pick up that new construction until the next year, and we'll already know what that is as of June 1st. And we also, when we're calculating the budget, we don't just take the number we got last year. We consider the new construction, add that in our anticipation of what the revenue will be. And the same for meals and tot for that growth. It goes the same. We don't just take the tot we had last year and plunk it in the budget for the next year. We look at the growth, the percentage of growth, and we add that as well, assuming we'll get that. So that's already been factored in when we're considering what the revenue loss will be for the year, or the, the net loss will be. Does that help?
I can go.
I just have a, a question of how this works. I, I don't remember. When do we make?
Next, next week.
Next week.
This is just a public hearing. So next week, we will actually bring the budget forward, put it on the table. At that time, you can openly discuss it. You can make amendments to it at that time, and then ultimately pass it.
Because I think there are some common misunderstandings in the public comments, and I think they deserve clarification. And I just want to make sure we make sure we build that in next week into an overall explanation of how some of those decisions came about. There's a lot of assumptions that, that we're reacting to 2020 and 2021. And I'm, there's much history of, since 2014 at least. And I, I just think we need to go through that. We've had work sessions, which were, the public was invited to, but they weren't, nobody knows that, you know, because they didn't come. So I just feel like we need to really make sure that we clarify some of those things. I, I think it's incredibly valuable that people submitted their thoughts and concerns, but there's, there's really a misconception of, of fact, and I think we need to make sure we hear that.
Yeah, don't worry about scooters.
Sorry, I don't want to... Two, two clarifications. One, the scooters was just, was, was an odd, oddball thing that someone approached our, our planning department about. We made a couple of phone calls. It was reported to somebody once. It's not an issue that we're concerned about. The, the other thing, the other clarification, if you're just looking at budget numbers, bottom-line budget numbers, you have to remember that it was extraordinary year last year and this year because of grants. So, so we, we receive the 118, I mean, $800,000 in a grant that we're passing through the businesses. Well, that shows up on our bottom line, even though it doesn't affect our budget. So, so, so you have to take into account those things. That's happened both last year and this year with ARPA money. So, so you can't really just pair it with the bottom-line numbers from 19 and say, oh, we've had all this growth. It's just been weird money. It's coming, and it's coming in and going out, so.
And of course, with all the sidewalks that have been going over the years, that's the same principle, because we got 80% grant money for those sidewalks that showed up on our bottom line. It was not our money.
I just think we need to make sure the public knows that next week, that we're going to address some of each of those concerns, not just jump in and pass the budget or go one way or another. We're going to spend... one way or another. We're going to spend some time.
So I'll review all the comments and prepare some comments to address some of these misconceptions when we present the budget next week.
Thank you. I couldn't remember how it works, so I appreciate that.
So can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Public hearing's closed. Item four, recognition of visitors, we have none. Item five, public comments to the regular meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for taking this time for us. As summer approaches, the increase in boat trailers, boats, and oversized vehicles parked on town streets has become a danger for bikers, for children, for walkers, and for cars. Many of the trailers don't have red flags or any other sign to call attention to the hazard. In many cases, drivers must veer into the lane for oncoming vehicles to avoid an obstacle. This concern has been addressed in the past, but it seems that nothing has been done. Nothing has been done to provide for safe and secure alternative parking for these obstacles. The residents and the visitors to the town deserve safe passage. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, no one else has signed up, but I do have one that was submitted.
Okay. Somebody saying they want to raise some more?
From Diane Diamico, Planning Commissioner. As the Planning Commission meeting of June 1, 2021, I was a sole dissenter to the changes proposed in Section 8 of the zoning ordinance. It was clear to me the point of these changes are not to preserve our history, but merely to look historic, hence the overuse of the word "character" in these guidelines. For those who want character, I suggest you purchase in Bay Creek. They are doing a fabulous job with their standards and guidelines. For those who value the historic integrity of Cape Charles, I beg the council to make the requirements more in line with preservation. Homes in this town are going for two, three, four times their original cost. Surely, people willing to spend that much money can afford a little more to preserve our town. If we are not willing to control the vast number of Airbnbs and VRBOs, at least let us revel in our history, our hometown values, and our grace.
Thank you. Is that it? All right, item six, consent agenda. Approval on agenda format, approval on minutes, approval of April 30th, 2021 financial report. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's the treasurer's report separate, not in the consent agenda?
No, it's in the consent agenda.
The financial report is...
Financial report.
I'd like to ask, wait, I haven't said it yet. I'd like to pull the treasurer's...
You gotta get a motion in a second.
We got that.
That's the point of beginning, to make a second discussion.
I'd like to pull the treasurer's report out of the consent agenda, because I have a question on it.
Okay, so can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, all but the April 30th, 2021 financial report?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Okay, so Debbie, I'm going to put you on the spot again, but I have a question on harbor, and it's mentioned in three places on the package 51 of 106, which is the summary. It says harbor debt service year-to-date is $102,605, and the year-to-date net loss is only $84,055. And then on the revenues versus expenditures for the harbor, it has net revenue, $595, sorry, $740, and expended $595 with a net of $145. And in the three-year rate comparison for revenue year-to-date is, I mean, for the harbor, it is almost double what it was last year. So I'm having trouble putting all those numbers together and getting some sense of what's really being reported.
The first one about the debt service, the amount that the general fund subsidizes, because usually harbor about breaks even, makes maybe $15,000, but this year they're doing well. They're doing well, but they're paying part of their loan debt service at this point, which is good because we're just starting to hit the high that we always used to have, maybe June, July, I mean, May and June. So that's just showing that they're doing well. They're covering a piece of their debt service this year.
Is it the difference between 102 and 84?
It's, yeah, yes, that's there, right. And then the other one on the revenue versus expenditures, it's complicated without us having to split out the grants and the operating expenses from the other operating expenses. So if you take the negative 229 for 81 and the 145 for 26, that should be the difference, which is about 80.
Okay.
And then this one is concerning me as well. I just, every month I stare at that and wonder, and now I have enough data. I've pulled all the data. I just haven't dropped it into a form yet, the harbor year-over-year for dockage only. It is very high. I think I pulled back to 2014 or 15, gathered those stats, and I'll drop you a report. Just finished some big projects I was working on. But there were several years, there were several years that dockage was over 200,000. We had a sharp decline, I believe it was '17, '18, and '19 that everyone was quite concerned about. We've raised rates twice since then, but it seems things are turning around.
And that's why I asked you to put that there, to see if you can track it, so you can watch it, so.
So it just seems too good to be true, so I'm looking at it.
The other point, I met with the yacht center folks this week to go over and check on how things are going. And one of the things that I asked them to work on in their new software system is to track occupancy rates better, because we can no longer use revenue, because it's apples to oranges now, because our rates are so much different. You can't just compare rates from one year to the other and say, well, we're doing better. So we need to actually count heads in the harbor. So I'm not sure that we have the data to compare to for last year, but to the extent we can couple that together, we will. But going forward, we need hard numbers of actual occupancy rates. You know, this week we were at 70%, next week we're at 80%. So we can track whether or not these, whether the rates are affecting actual flow into the harbor. So it's a work in progress, but we'll get there.
To be honest with you, John, the system we have now, if it's used properly, it does it.
If it was used properly. Is the pertinent comment, yes.
We are just keeping a spreadsheet.
Well...
And then I thought it was like a shoulder seat, this wire, you know, and broader, and that way you can project revenues.
Just for my, me generally, just from day-to-day visuals, it's way busier than it's been in a long time, way busier. And I'm talking during the week, not the weekends. Generally, it used to be pretty vague during the week, which is, it's not now, and it's a big turnaround, a big, big turnaround.
Okay, so I need to approve that.
Can I get a motion to approve the April 30th, 2021 financial report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Item seven, A, unfinished business, Cape Charles zoning ordinance amendments. Articles two definitions, Articles eight, historic district overlay.
Joe, Mr. Man, this has been a process, as you are aware. This started with your request that we review this. We had a joint work session with the planning commission, the board, and the council to go over much of this. The changes that were proposed as a result of the work session were then sent to, were then given to the planning commission, received public hearing, a joint public hearing, you were there. And then the planning commission made their recommendations on that. So you'll see the original changes were one color, and then the planning commissions are another. Katie Noonan did the staff report. I think she did a very good job of talking very succinctly about what the changes the commission did. One thing that I want to, I'll talk in general first, and then we'll dive into as much detail as you'd like. First, this document, I've been trying to reach the certified local government office to get their opinion on all of this. I wasn't successful getting their interaction early on, but it has since picked up. They have, I forwarded them the document as amended by the planning commission for review, and I spoke to them on the phone about it. The only recommendation that they offered was that we be a little bit more robust in the definition of the qualifications needed for board members. I wasn't actually aware of this, still trying to use the new guide shit, I can't do that much longer, but apparently there is a document with requirements that is not on the website. And anyway, they forwarded it to me, and there are actual requirements for qualifications on the board. Now, they recognize that small towns can't always meet those requirements, but we have to at least ask for them. We have to at least try. So I passed out tonight a recommended substitution for Section 8.9. The first one is what's currently in the packet. The second one is worded to reflect the comments from the state. It just more accurately reflects the qualifications that we would liken an ideal candidate. So there's that recommended substitution tonight. Also, in, again, Katie did a fine job of outlining all of this. And I was at the meeting, my, in my opinion, all of the changes that the planning commission recommended make the document better. I think they clarified things. They did their job and made it better. The only one that I would call to your attention, because it's more of a policy, potentially call, I think a clarification, would be Section 8.20. It's on page seven of the document. And, oh, wait a minute, wrong one.
Yeah, 8.20.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, it's 8.20, I'm sorry. The original wording that in here, was in here, is that the board is expected to work with each applicant to assist them in achieving their goal while preserving the character of the district. The commission chose to strike that language in its entirety and instead refer to Section 8.25, which is the section that defines the pre-application review process. If you go to Section 825, it just says that a pre-application meeting will happen. It doesn't give any direction as to what should happen there. So to the extent that you wanted to provide more guidance to what the board should do with an applicant, that was the only thing they approached, maybe substantive. So I'm just calling your attention to it. I don't have a recommendation. I'm just calling your attention to it. Other than that one, I would recommend approval of the document with the planning commission changes. We can go through these one at a time. We can go through these by exception. What is your preference?
Yeah, my preference is to make a motion to accept the entirety of Article eight as presented with the planning commission changes, coupled with your change for Section 8.9 as a result of our conversations with the Department of Historic Resources. So we got a motion.
I actually have some issues.
Well, we've got to get a second. We've got a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion, we've got a second. Discussion.
Okay, I actually had a few questions and suggested, a couple suggested changes, one of which he just addressed. I had flagged this qualifications issue, and I think the new language is much better. It was initially more narrow, so I think this is better. I had flagged in a couple places the kind of issue John just raised. I think it first comes up in 8.2, when we're talking about the design guidelines, and that was of the, I think, of the report. But I watched the whole meeting, and some of these things were taken out, because people felt it was defensiveness over past conduct. This is a looking-forward document. It's not about what's happened before, and it's about communicating our vision. So if, say, five years from now, we have a whole new historic district review board, none of whom remember this discussion, I think we need to provide the guidance of how we expect them to work with the public. So like an example that John just mentioned, I would prefer to put the old language back in, how we expect them to work with them, good with the applicants. It's just a tone of how we expect them to undertake their So I would propose, on the part that John just commented, that we put that language back in. I had a little point of addition on Section 815.
So if I, for procedure, just to keep it clean, can we do them one at a time?
Okay.
So if you would like to propose a motion to amend Section 820 to its original language prior to the planning commission, that would be appropriate time to do it.
So moved.
This is going to get real complicated, then.
Yeah, this is, technically, they've got, Paul needs to amend his...
No, no, you deal with his issue right now.
This is one specific amendment. We're just going to discuss and vote on this one amendment.
Oh, we're going to vote on each one as we go along?
All right, so you need to make a motion?
So I move we amend Section 8.20A to include the additional wording about the pre-application review, but also to reinstate the wording about the board is expected to work with each applicant to assist them in achieving their goal while preserving the character of the district.
Second.
I agree.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? All right, next issue.
A small, and 8.21. And it might be that I wasn't understanding the language correctly. And, actually, never mind, that is exactly what I, now see, that was a mistake.
Yeah, 8.21, this was a reinstatement from the previous deletion, so.
Andrew, you were speaking of one. I thought it was 8.18 or something like that before we diverted.
8.15.
Or something up, or, I don't, we kind of sidetracked you a little bit.
Yeah, but I think we just covered it, because it was in more than, it came up in more than one place. But let me just double-check. Oh, no, sorry, you're right. Thank you. That was just a small point.
Yeah.
Section 8.15, summary of administrative review procedures. Section B, it says actions related to guidelines will be the purview of the historic district review board. I thought "related" was vague and maybe too broad, and I would suggest changing it to actions addressed under the guidelines.
A little motion on that.
Okay, I move that we change Section 8.15B to read actions addressed by the guidelines will be the purview of the historic district review board with the remaining wording stints.
Second.
We got a motion, we got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Okay. And then, more discussion? Okay, Vice Mayor?
Has certain minor actions exempted from review by the historic district review board. Additions or deletions to an existing building which are not visible from a public street or sidewalk. Hallies in this context are not considered public places. So it would seem to me that there are quite a few homes that you can't see the backyard from the street, in which you could do...
H, is that where you're at?
I'm at 8.15, 8.17H, correct.
8.16.
It's 8.16.
Well, it's 8.17, and this, we all have all the green writing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, same with me. I got 8.17. I have 17 also, and it's clean.
I have 16. Oh, you're on Dropbox. How much is it?
The wording that was struck was right away and which will not significantly alter the character of the building. And you could do a significant alteration to the character of a building, the back of it. It pretty much exempts anything you want to do in the backyard. And you could do a, a significant alteration to the character of a building, the back of it, it pretty much exempts anything you want to do in the backyard from a lot of places, I think.
And, and that was why we took it out, it was, how do you define significantly affect or alter the character?
That's the whole purpose of the historic district review board, is to determine that.
It was removed because of the expectation that this was too subjective in language.
And isn't the, the limitation that you're looking for, isn't that provided in three B, when it says general examples of works constituting substantial alterations, which I don't think this applies to? Um, says any addition to or alteration of the building which increases the square footage of the building or otherwise alters substantially its size, height, contour, or outline?
Right.
So is this some, just a minor action, you can't do an addition based on what a minor action is?
That was my understanding, but Paul?
Well, no, no, really, the language here is if you cannot see it, it's exempt.
But it still has to go through.
Whether it's substantial or.
All changes, yes, has to get, be submitted for zoning and, you know, review for.
But it's exempt from the historic district review board.
Correct.
I find that a little strange, that, that the Planning Commission would recommend that.
Well, you're recommending that to retain that?
Well, I mean, I'm bringing it up for discussion, I, I didn't understand why it was struck, because there's so.
I'm just saying, that's why.
My understanding, if, if, and, and I don't, I don't have a lot of history here, obviously, but in prior discussions that I've heard with regard to the, the, the board and with the commission, was that if you didn't, if you couldn't see it from a public right of way, you got much more latitude with what you could do. Um, and I think that's where this was going, was.
Is a pub, right of way include an alley?
No, it does not.
No.
So this is, I'm just going to give an example.
Street or sidewalk, yeah.
So, the back of my house.
You're in a corner like that.
Right, no, the, the back, which you can see very clearly from the park and from that alley, so I could do anything and it didn't have to be.
In your, in your case, you have a sidewalk in the park in which you can see the back of your house.
So the sidewalk's the public space.
It's, it's, it says street or sidewalk.
Okay, all right, just wanted to, because that's a good example.
Paul, is it, is it, because I know you would know the practice better, um, is it spelled out anywhere else? Like, I guess, and maybe I read something in that wasn't there, I thought this was zoning it up for things like if you're replacing a window or doing something minor.
No, that's all up above, you know, replacing broken windows and, and what have you. This is really a, a, a major change.
So it's car wash?
Yeah, this is a major change.
It is a major change, that's why.
So that might have overshooting on the car.
Yeah, because.
You weren't part of the discussion we had when we had the historic people from Virginia come in. So one of the things that they said, the back of it, you know, put an addition on the back, I mean, it could be as modern as you want, as long as you maintain the character of the original structure, they were fine with that. So, and that's leaving into the back of the house.
Yeah, and this is not something we alone invented, this, we've compared to other design guidelines and ordinances, not everybody captures it this way, but we have other examples of other towns and cities that are, are structured this way.
Uh, I'm just kind of amazed, quite frankly, that there was this significant a change that was discussed and recommended.
Um, another point I should have mentioned at the very beginning of this discussion, um, I've mentioned it before, but I, I want to say it again. We are in a several step process here, this is step one of three. So step one is, are these initial changes. Step two will be to hire a consultant to help us with, uh, look at this, redo our design guidelines, and it is presumed that in the process of that design guideline rebuild, we will find additional things in here, and this will be back again later this year for the second round. So, um, and just throw that out there, if, 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 this is, we're not, we're not one and done here, this is our fir, our, our, our first step at fixing it. Once we get a consultant on board, they will look at it too, and we can bring back additional, um, changes. And if you look at it, or if any of you look at it and decide after tonight that, well, maybe I, I should have done that, you'll get another shot at it, is what I'm saying.
Okay, and I probably should have said, you know, this, overall, I don't know that there's anything that I'm opposed to voting for this, but I did have a number of questions, I wanted to find out why we did what we did.
That, that's fine.
So, uh, on, uh, the structural elements is mentioned a lot of times as you can't change, and I'm looking now at eight point eighteen, point three, point C. General examples of work constituting substantial alterations include any alteration of exterior architecture or style of a structure or its significant elements. Some examples being removal or rebuilding of porches, openings, dormers, sashes, chimneys, blah, 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 and any other structural element. And I don't see a definition of structural element, uh, and maybe because I'm a structural engineer, I, I have a definition of structural element that doesn't necessarily, uh, need to be something you can't change in a historic building, because for the most part, structural elements aren't visible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have, I just recall Article two, that has our definitions.
Yeah, and I didn't see it.
You'll see structure there, but you won't see structural elements.
Yeah.
So that would be, need to be added?
Well, no, I mean, I guess my point is, um, there's a lot of stuff that says you cannot change a structural element of a home, and if you're, if you have a, a house that has floor joists that are, are rotted, those are structural elements. And in order to save the home, you put in new floor joists, you're changing a structural element, which.
Okay, but you're changing interior, this is all covered exterior changes to a structure falls within the historic.
That's what I'm saying, the term structural element then, as it applies to exterior, you need to define that, because it doesn't, it, there isn't any. It's all architectural elements on the exterior.
Right.
With, other than porch columns.
Yeah, I was going to say porch columns, I was.
Yeah, porch columns is the only one I can think of.
Yeah.
So anyway, I, I just bring that up, uh, I think it needs to be looked at.
Would you have a recommendation for wording?
I don't, uh, I, I, because it appears multiple times in the document, and.
Could we make note for that for the consultant to specifically address that?
Or, it wouldn't hurt anything to just, to strike or structural elements from that.
From that paragraph, absolutely, but there are other places it appears, there's, you have to do a word search to find all the places it appears that need to be looked at.
The other thing that comes back to me is lintels, where there's the stuff, there's a structural element.
If it's a brick house, if it's a.
Yeah, exactly.
Collapery house, you can't see them.
Yeah, I think, I think Tammy had a good suggestion, I'll leave it up to the consultant and we come back then to determine clarification if, if need be.
If, I'll, if that's your wish, I'll make sure that gets brought to the consultant's attention.
Okay, uh, in definitions administrator, the zoning administrator means the official charge of the enforcement of the zoning ordinance, the administrator may be appointed, or appointed or an elected fish, official who is designated to the position by town council, and it formally said by formal resolution. What's, what's the intent of that change?
We've never done it by resolution, so it's just, it's just been by motion usually.
We've been doing a lot of things by resolution that we haven't done in the past, and now we're not doing this by resolution, so I'm, I'm a little confused. If the zoning administrator is as important a position as it seems to be, just a comment.
It, it doesn't matter to me either way, I was, we were changing this to reflect actual practice. If you want to go back, if you wanted to change practice and start using resolutions, then we can leave it in.
Well, I'm, I'm, again, we see resolutions at every meeting, so, and we, um, I don't know, just another change that seemed a little odd to me. And one more is, is, and it may be as it appears on the iPad, but the, uh, the version that is unmarked seems to have a lot of, um, words that are, two words are joined together without a space between them, it happens at least ten times in the document, and I don't know whether it's the way the PDF was created.
It was.
Or whether it's actually in the document.
It was, we tried to catch, we tried to catch them several times.
Yeah.
Those are typos we can correct.
All right, John?
Uh, while, while, while the vice mayor's still looking, I just want to, a point of clarification, I, I think it was Councilman Grossman who put the motion on the floor, I just want to make sure for the record, I think he only said to approve Article eight, did you mean Article eight and Article two?
I'm saying Article eight and Article two.
Okay, all right, so I just want, I want to make sure.
I was going to come around back to.
Does, does the second of the motion agree?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to clean that up, thank you.
So in eight point three, inventory of landmarks and contributing properties established, uh, the last sentence says the map may be amended from time to time in the same manner as the zoning district map. Has that map ever been amended?
We have, we have to produce this map.
Okay.
We have to reproduce it because perhaps at one time it was there, we cannot put our hands on it.
And this is specifically in the scope of work of the consultant?
All right, I'm finished, thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, uh, I move for adoption of ordinance two zero two one O six, uh, one seven A, adoption revision to Cape Charles zoning ordinance Articles two and eight as noticed and forego the reading of the ordinance. Now you get a roll call vote.
Buckhold, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Bulmer, yes.
Uh, when we notice you know. All right, number eight, new business, uh, eight A, code forty-two dash three, adoption of state law.
So, so again, Mr. Mayor, this is the, the housekeeping item that we were, that we do every year. Last year, Councilman Grossman, uh, requested that we check into this some more, I delegated that to the clerk who checked into it and, and confirmed that it is a requirement that we, we still need to do this every year. The staff recommends approval.
All right, so we got a recommendation, can I get a motion?
I move that we adopt ordinance two oh two, two one O six O three C to adopt the amendments to the Virginia Code.
It's B, isn't it?
It does say B on the next page.
Oh, how was you reading the header?
Yeah, the header says C.
Which is it, Charlie?
It says B in the attachments, and, uh,
Yeah.
C up in the proposal.
It's B, it's actually B.
So.
It is B.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
A second B.
It's less C, it's much more likely to change.
All right, so we got a motion, we got a second for B, any discussion on B? Okay?
Just one quick one, and it's not directly related to this, but just as a sort of reminder, um, I hope at some point we'll come back to, we previously discussed that town has not due cost subscribed to a service that keeps us up to date on legal changes that could affect us, such as the fact that we were illegally allowing after-hours schooling at the harbor. Um, and littlenesses like that could end up being very, very costly to us, so I hope we can revisit in the future subscribing to that service.
Well, there is no service to subscribe to, but, but we, we will be doing it this year as a matter of business, because as part of the overall, not just the historic district, the overall zoning review we're doing, uh, we've, we've contracted with the, uh, municipal code to look at the entire ordinance, and we'll do that, including the special session from this year. So we will, we will have it taken care of this year.
Okay.
Going forward, we still need to address your concern, how, how we maintain it.
Great, thank you.
Any more discussion? I move for adoption of ordinance, uh, two zero two one O six one seven B to adopt title sixteen point one, chapter eleven, article nine, section sixteen point one dash, uh, two seven eight, uh, and title eighteen two, chapter seven, article two, sections eighteen two dash two, two six six, if any, if any, for the incorporation into the Cape Charles time code, chapter forty-two, motor vehicles and traffic, as noticed, and forego the reading of the ordinance, ordnance, yeah, ordinance. Can I get a roll call vote?
Buckhold, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Bulmer, yes.
All right. A B, amendments to the electronic participation, uh, participation in town council meetings policy.
So this came as a result of the pandemic and recent changes in special session of the, of the assembly this year. They changed the, we were limited to, um, having electronic participation just twice per year, and it's now been updated to twenty, or twenty-five percent of the meetings held. So we're, so we're changing our procedures to match the state code. Um, just as an aside, um, as of today, our emergency ordinance expires, um, and as of the thirty, thirtieth of this month, the state emergency ordinance expires. The governor's letting the states expire as well, so, um, but this was, this is, I think this is a welcome addition to our flexibility, I recommend approval.
All right, we got a recommendation, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Uh, I do.
Can I call in sick?
Huh?
So if I can call in sick and self video.
No, we have to agree that you can be let in.
That you're really sick.
We have to agree.
This is addressing meetings, regular meetings and special meetings, any, any called meeting, correct? So if we meet twice a month, that's twenty-four, that's twenty-four, so it would be six times. Okay.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item C, July regular meeting date change.
So, this is, this is a request that I, that I asked the, the mayor to consider, he was okay with it, we want to make sure it's okay with you, but changes to the regular meeting can only be done by resolution. The reason for delaying is we have five, uh, Thursdays in July, and we have a, a pending zoning matter that will go to joint public hearing on the thirteenth. There's not enough time to turn that around for the regular meeting on the fifteenth. So we're requesting that you delay one, one week so we can, we don't have to wait a whole nother month to, to conduct that, that business. So we recommend approval.
So, can I get them, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I move for adoption of.
Can I make a comment?
Discussion, discussion.
Sorry, but it's a good thing we passed the previous, uh, action item, because while I would have been here for the July fifteenth meeting, I will not be here for the, the July twenty-second meeting, I'll be on business travel, so I will call in for that.
Okay.
All right. I move for adoption of resolution two zero two one O six one seven A, changing, uh, changing day of July, uh, two thousand twenty-one, Cape Charles Town Council regular meeting as noticed and forego the reading of the resolution. Can I get a roll call vote?
Buckhold, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Bulmer, yes.
Let me know when it was unanimous. Item D, Department of Wildlife Resource Beltland Cooperative Agreement.
So I've tried to keep you up to date on this negotiation, um, the, the current vote agreement that expired last fall, we had in place for twenty years following a, a major renovation to the harbor. Um, that program still exists, and I was interested in trying to keep us in that program as, um, when it's, the time comes, um, probably not till after all of us are gone, but, um, it's going to be very, very expensive to the town, somewhere probably in the range of, of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of, of repairs. Um, if we stay in the program, the state will cover all of it, it's not, it's not a match, I mean, they, they would cover all of it. In return, we give them free access, the public, free access to, to the ramps. I was not, uh, excited about entering into that agreement now, not knowing when this agree, when the, um, renovation might happen, because that renovation uses federal funds, and federal funds requires twenty years from that point forward. And I felt that we were just giving away the ramp between now and when the renovation was done. So, um, instead, we worked out a separate agreement that is much shorter duration, it's just five years, um, in which they will step up and do some needed repairs now, technically, these were our responsibility under the old. Technically, these were our responsibility under the old agreement, but they're going to do it for us now. And we would provide free access to the public for those five years. At the end of those five years, we'll do another evaluation to determine where or when we may need this agreement and whether we want to renew it. One thing that I was able to put in this agreement that we were not able to put in the prior agreement was that we have the ability to close down the harbor for an event for a day, two times a year, throughout the, the course of this. I just want to make sure everyone understands that that is only because federal funds are not involved. We're using state funds and they have more flexibility. So for this five-year period, we have the ability to do that. If in year six, we renew this and we get that major renovation and federal funds are used, we wouldn't be able to do that. But we'll worry about that at the time. I wanted to build it into flexibility now. This also releases us from the administrative burden of trying to collect fees. Our back, our, our back of the envelope estimate was that we could probably generate somewhere in the range of $15,000 a year in, in revenue. This was corroborated with a FOIA request to the state to determine what the revenue kept the peak boat ramp was getting. The, over the last five years, they were averaging somewhere in the $13,000 range. So it's not huge money, and then there's administrative costs of managing it. So for, for, for the ability of staying in the program to help, help fix this major renovate, this major liability down the road, and, and for the, the work that's going to get done now that we don't have to pay for, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this agreement.
Second.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. On, on the second page of the agreements, item number seven calls drafting. And I don't necessarily understand any court proceeding or other dispute. Neither the town nor the department shall be deemed the drafter of this agreement.
That, that, that was their, their standard language in, in their agree, in their agreements. It, it's just to assume that it's, it's not preordained from either side. It's, it's a neutral document. It's the way I take that. So that's the way the court is to, is to interpret it.
At the risk of sounding repetitive, I did just want to reiterate what John said, particularly for the public. In case there's any confusion, that we're somehow giving away what could be a significant revenue source. You know, we factor in the administrative burden of user fees for every boat or other marine vehicle using that launch. And the cost of these repairs $50,000 this year alone, so that would be the first four years of revenue, not including the administrative cost. We're really coming out ahead this way, and we're, we're not giving away anything. So I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
Any, any other discussion?
I do have, I do want to say, so with that, I was a big proponent of not giving this away. And I do appreciate staff's hard work of doing the digging and getting answers that I wanted. I do think this is the best way to go, and I appreciate all the hard work, so thank you. So, that being said.
So, so Mr. Mayor, just, just as, again, technical point, the, the motion is to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. I move for adoption of Resolution 2021-06-17B. Cooperative Agreement for Boat Landing as noticed and forego the reading of the resolution. Roll call vote.
Buckhold, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Fulmer, yes.
Let me notice you unanimously. Mr. How is it you're up?
All right, I have a number of things, uh, Mr. Mayor. I'll try to, I'll try to keep them short. To, to the point of the last item, I was, as I mentioned earlier, over there talking with the yacht center folks. And I think they're doing a, a fine job. The, the new staff is doing, doing really well there. One of the issues came up on, in the budget also, we have some money put inside to help clean up the harbor. It's also part of the vision statement you gave the yacht center to clean up like the east end of the inner harbor. But that also has a functional place for parking, too. So, so there's, there's a, that's give and take. One of the things that we discussed was, and I, and I have been contacted by Canoni to explore the possibility of, of including in our, at least with them, additional parking there by the boat ramp. So I just wanted to let you know that I intend to pursue that discussion with them to see what it would cost to, to potentially have more parking, trailer parking there by the boat ramp. That would free up the, the east end of the inner harbor, and it would just make life a whole lot easier. So if I can work out reasonable terms, I'll bring that back. I'll let you know. The, oh, the other big thing, the KEPCORE item is now done, complete, gone. VDOT has, has made, made the transfer to our account. I have ordered the release of funds from escrow. It is gone. It is history. Also notified that, from VDOT, that they have approved your request to reduce the speed limit on Stone Road. And it will be, and it's sooner than I thought, it will be effective next Wednesday, the 23rd is when they will be here to put out, swap out the signs. I had originally requested two weeks' notice so that we could help inform the public. We were going to put out our, 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 our mobile sign unit to let people know, hey, the speed limit's going to be changing soon. So the chief did put that out there this afternoon.
That's ours?
Uh, yeah, for the COVID money. And so so we're, so we're trying to notify the public as best we can that it'll be changing. One thing that wa, that was initially concerning to me was they did not initially approve the rumble strips that went with it. That has since been resolved. They, I've got them to approve that. However, the problem is the signs will be going in before the rumble strips. So that's, that's going to be a little issue, and people are going to be not used to this new procedure, and they're not going to have the rumble strips as a reminder. So it's going to be a little rocky start. I would, I would encourage you to encourage people to use caution in that area until people become more accustomed to this new situation, and until we get those rumble strips in so that everyone can feel that coming in. So, so just to remind you, the, of what the request was, the request was it's 55 to the Cassett Parkway. At that point, it goes to 40. And then it's, it's 40 miles an hour from there to is it Hermitage? Hermitage Road? And at that point is where it goes to 25, it stays 25 on into town. The rumble strips will go on the westbound lane just east of the 25 mile an hour zone once, once they are installed.
Do we, do we still have a?
Fastest study, yeah.
Do we still have an old, do we still have an old police car somewhere?
No one lights on it, but they purge tunnels, got plenty of them, because they leave empty ones on the bridge all the time. Maybe they'll learn.
That's the point of his gig now. So people come in there and slow down.
Just take a dummy car, don't you?
Works for them.
Let's just, let's just make it public.
Yeah, make it public for people that are coming in, they see that.
On the workforce.
Yeah, whatever, they see that, then. It's not like trying to generate revenue. It's kind of a little.
It's, it's going to, it's going to be a learning curve. It's going to be rough for a little while, so people learn to do that. It's, it's very painful to slow down that much, that far out, if you're not used to it.
How soon will the rumble strips arrive?
I don't know. I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to get that from them today.
People get mad at me on that.
I'll, I'll be after them, so that they happen as soon as possible. Okay, the other thing I wanted to, to make sure you were briefed on, I, I've included it in my reports, but we've got, we've got an issue with the Randolph Beach entrance point. And the reason it hasn't been dug out is for safety concerns. The, the underlying wood path is just, I was appalled last year when we dug it out, at what, at what was there. The dunes have grown so tall and so narrow, it fills, it fills it in, it's hard to maintain. And then because it's too narrow for equipment, all the wood is broken and sharp, and it's, it's a safety hazard. So we chose not to dig it out this year until we came up with a plan for how to dig it out. There really is no way to, in order to dig it out, we've got to remove that wood. To do that, we're going to have to widen it a little bit and eat into the dunes a little bit. That's technically against the dune plan. It's your plan, so unless you object, that's what I'm going to do. We've been waiting, Public Works has been pretty busy putting in mulch at the, at the playground the past couple of weeks. It's our intent to try to get to that next week. So hopefully we'll try and have that open, but it will be opening up the dunes a little bit. And it won't be the permanent fix. We're not going to go all the way down and take out the pilings. There'll still be some sand as a protection. Get rid of all of it, it'll have to be done off-season. But anyway, it's, it's one of our most popular entry points, and I've been hearing a lot about it, and that's why. It hasn't been open for safety reasons, and hopefully we'll get to that, that next week.
Can we strive to do it before July 4th weekend?
Yeah, and I'm trying to do it, trying to do it away from a weekend, so I'm doing it on a Tuesday, on a Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah.
So we're, we're spotted for a Tuesday, Wednesday, so that it's not.
Because if we think we're busy now, that's.
They're still using it, though.
Yeah, I know. We put, we, we put a sign there that said temporarily closed.
They move it over.
Well, no, they got rid of it. I, I moved it over so that they wouldn't take it away.
Oh, yeah.
I want to say that is an adopted plan, so I want to get consent of council that it's good to go. So do I get consent of council?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate that. Also, wanted just to let you know, we did formally put in our request for ARPA money, and it was acknowledged. So we will be scheduling a work session on that later this summer, once we have, once the dust settles, we have a better idea of what we can use it for. Again, ha, again, half of it this year, half of it next year, and it'll be shown as a carryforward in the budget next week.
And, and you're planning on a public input section for that?
Well, I was going to start with a work session to start the process, and, and yes, as it was all that work session, we can probably have public. But I, I guess I need to get the, get the rules out there so everyone knows. Before they, before people start putting out ideas, they need to know what the parameters are. And so I wanted to brief that to you in public in a work session, and then we can put it out for public comment.
All I'm saying is I'm seeing other towns or entities
Yeah.
having public input sessions in order to collect and then work
Then work.
on, on the.
Lexmore's already used all theirs.
Yeah, different than the reverse in the public hearing. We want to get input on the front end.
Yeah, we could look at, we could look at doing it that, at that way.
This might not be the right time to mention this, but there's a business on, on Mason Avenue that's offered their space for council to be available to the public for just an open session, open conversation where they could know who council is and people can exchange thoughts and ideas.
Like a town hall meeting?
Yeah, a very informal town hall meeting with ice cream served, as a matter of fact. And so it, it might be a neat way for people to interact with our citizens and, and then some people may have more access to that sort of venue than to come to a formal meeting to express their.
Okay.
Anything else for Rosa?
Just real quick, I got a request from ANEC for the town to provide a letter of support in, for a grant that they are putting in to, putting charging stations for electric vehicles. It's very generic, a very generic support, where the support is in awareness only. We're not committing to anything financially. I intend to submit the letter of support, but I just want to make sure you were aware of it before I did it. Okay. I also, I got no, I got a request today, or noticed today, from our, one of our new businesses on Mason, K Coast Surf Shop. They're having a formal, an ESVA formal ribbon cutting ceremony on June 26th at 12:30. And they have invited all of the council and the mayor and myself to, to attend the ribbon cutting. And so I, I told them I would let you know about it. They're also having a champion pro surfer, Brian Stor, I think that's how you pronounce his name, will be there signing autographs.
He can do his demonstration down on the beach.
So anyway, if you're available, please put that, put that on your calendar.
June 26th, what time?
It's a, it's a Saturday, June 26th at 12:30. And the last thing I have is I'm going to be requesting some time off after, after the 4th of July. Our very best friends from Alaska are coming down for a week, and we're not going anywhere. We're just going to show them around town. So I'll be around. I just won't be in the office from the 5th to the 13th of July. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, John. Mr. Fulmer.
Just one brief comment. I mentioned, I think, before the meeting, but I wanted to say publicly, good job to Public Works. I had walked down a few weeks ago around the harbor, and one of our people who ran a slip there had shown me around at how badly disrepair a lot of the boards were and tripping hazard. And I walked back with my dog earlier this week, and John says they haven't hit all of them yet, but if there's any boards that are still not repaired, I did not see them. So it looks much, much better, and it's definitely much safer, so thank you, Public Works.
So not, not, not that I don't want to support my Public Works.
And the yacht center.
I've got, I've got a great Public Works team, but the yacht, but that work was entirely done by the yacht center.
All right, thank you, yacht center.
It was not, Public Works donated the lumber. So they brought the lumber over, but all that work was done by the yacht center.
Excellent, right, and they're doing a good job.
Mr. Grossman.
Nothing tonight?
So we should be thanking Public Works for taking care of the trees in the alleys, though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, well, they deserve the big thank you there. That's all I have.
Yeah, I got a couple of things I wanted to bring up that I have brought up in the past, and it's been a while since I brought them up, so I thought I'd bring them up again. And one of them is the sign out on Route 13 that says public beach and free fishing pier. And given the state of the tourism that we currently have, I don't think we need to be advertising a free fishing pier or a public beach. I think we have plenty of people coming to town to use those things, and I think those signs could be better used for something else. Maybe town, uh, Main Street could come up with something, something to better talk about the town as opposed to a free fishing pier and a public beach. So I didn't get much traction on that the last time I brought it up, but I'm bringing it up again, and I'd like to see something happen.
Can I give you just a little, you'll be encouraged by this?
Yes.
It looks like that Main Street's going to get a $10,000 design grant, and the first idea we came up with is redoing that.
Yay.
So you, you must have been sending the last message. It's not official, but the $10,000 is official, but as far as selecting what the item is.
I frequently have those business people and residents making the exact, raising the exact same issue Stephen just did.
Yes, forever.
Um, well, the other one is now, because of the recent change of 184, I want to get back on the agenda immediately. Changing the speed limit on Route 642, Old Cape Charles Road from the entrance of Bay Creek down to where the 25 mile an hour speed limits start. That's something that needs to happen, and it was pushed off the agenda because we only wanted to go for 184 first, but we got it, so I want to go for the other one. And the third one was another thing that I had brought up, not formally, but had, was bringing it up about the time COVID hit. And that was a change to the golf cart ordinance to not require seat belts in order to get a golf cart inspected. Golf cart manufacturers do not factory install seat belts because it's proven to be safer if you're in an accident in a golf car with a vehicle. Safer if you are able to get away from the cart as opposed to being belted in. So I'd like to see us change that part of the ordinance. It doesn't say that you can't have them if you want them, but I don't think they need to be mandatory in order to get a golf cart inspected in town.
Do we have a work session on that?
We were supposed to, but COVID came, and we didn't talk about anything but emergency stuff. So I had a letter from Club Car that outlined it all. Got pushed away. You, that was before.
You forward that to me?
Excuse me?
Would you forward that letter to me?
I, I will. I gave it to you.
From that computer that died, right?
Okay, that's it.
Well, following up on that same level is, and Ms. Straub brought it up tonight, we need to get the boats and trailers issued back on the table for a work session. I'm not saying that we're putting things off. I'm just, it was a good reminder, because that got put off because of COVID. And we just need to get it back on the agenda again. I want to give a real big shout out to Diane Diamico and Patsy Harris from Main Street. I didn't have time to go by and pick them up, but they completed the new business. Yeah, Diane, I didn't pick them up. There's a trifle that they did on starting a new business, as you may recall, in our strategic planning. That was one of our items. It had been on Main Street's kind of agenda for a while. It's completed, and it's really, really done well. I know John has referenced it. I will try to get those for next time, but they did a great job, and it checks off one of our objectives on our strategic planning, which is good. Tonight is the first of four Third Thursday events down by the Love Sign. I'm sure they take Third Thursdays because it's council night, and we'll never be able to attend.
Whoa, we're going July 15?
Oh, yeah, we go July 15th now.
Yes, great. That is perfect. I know the chief is sad, too. He's like, how could they have a lawn that night? So I'm hoping it's going well down there. They've done a lot of hard work. We are, come July 1, Main Street gets their official Virginia Main, we're Virginia Main Street Community Signs. And we're working with John on location. Street community signs and we're working with John on locations of those. But what it did is it prompted some conversations with some folks through Virginia Main Street that connected us with some VDOT folks. And then from that, we actually have a great kind of build a relationship meeting with VDOT and John and Karen next week. So, I'm hoping that this will tread into good directions on other things.
Route 642.
We know that we have proposed locations, but-
That's only going from 35 to 25. It's not going to be, it's not going to be a big deal.
You probably have noticed that the banners that were once on the lamp posts haven't been up. They, you know, our elements, including wind, destroyed those pretty, over three, it's three years, but anyway, they've been destroyed pretty terribly and we needed to make some adjustments on size and style. We did some research with Virginia Beach. Obviously, they have wind and elements and so we took some advice on them and we're giving that material a try and they, I think, have arrived, so they should be up very soon.
Our issue, our issue is the banner arms. I think that was the limiting factor. We were waiting for the banner arms to come in.
John, do you have one that we have?
Oh, okay.
For the ones we have.
Oh.
CCP ones were misprinted, so they'll be redone, but we'll put the old ones up because it does have the information into it.
Oh, good. Okay. We did add a few, we added banners to the harbor, so on those lamp posts as well to kind of tie it all together. And we did work with CCP on a couple of them that say for the concert series so that when people are down in that area, they know. So, we're excited, but they have been missing in action. It's much longer than we thought, but I think the research will pay off. And then the last is great news, we received, one, two, three, four, Northampton County infrastructure grants. One is for actually some additional benches that will go on Mason Avenue. It's the first time we've asked for that type of thing, so we're going to go for more of that next year. The Love Fest got money, Fester Fridays got money and the Golf Cart Path got funded fully. So, oh, and the Love Run, so that's, yeah, that's great. We did well. That's it.
Council of Buckholz?
They took care of it.
I got two or three things. First of all, I want to say thank you all and thank all the citizens for attending Cape Charles Day. I want to thank all the staff. It was pretty good attendance, so thank you all very much. I do want to thank Public Works, I've walked around town, they've been around town. The town looks nice. So, I do want to say, give a shout out to Public Works crew. You can tell they've been getting it, so I do appreciate that. The harbor looks nice, too, as nice as it's been a long time, so the town looks good as a whole, so thank you, John, and your staff, so I do appreciate that. Other than that, there's something, anyway, we'll just go on the other nine spots, I'll think of it next meeting. June 18th, town offices closed in observance for Juneteenth. June 24th, town council special meeting. July 1, town council special meeting if needed. July 4th, 4th of July festivities, which, that's what I'm going to do. Jim, where's the fireworks? We'll be, I get questions, it's posted, it's going to be on Bay Avenue. Where at on Bay? Fireworks.
They're going to be lit off the same place.
That's what I thought. I was like, what?
Somebody thinks somebody's got some mis-
Yeah, okay.
Person to say something.
It does, Lord, he is not-
I've got like four fire holes or Texas.
They're going to shoot scooters.
We're out of paint, I'm like-
I'll be happy to put something on Facebook next week to let everybody know.
Because it's just fireworks.
They're going to be at the same spot, so. July 5th, town offices closed in observance of Independence Day. July 13th, joint public hearing with Planning Commission. July 15th is no longer, it's now July 22nd, the regular town council meeting. Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
So who?
Second.
On the favor?
All right.
Here we go. Discussion, consideration, or interviews, Code Virginia 2.2-3711-A, paragraph one. Discussion, consideration-
The public may stay until they-
Yeah, you may stay until I finish reading the- Consideration of interviews for prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, specifically review performance of the Historic District Review Board. May I ask the members of the public to leave the room? You can stick around and we'll invite you back in after we reconvene. There is no members of the public outside? Video started? Certification to each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter. And two, only such business, public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was conveyed, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by a public body. Can I get a motion to return to open session?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Buckholz, yes.
Holloway, yes.
Bennett, yes.
O'Brien, yes.
Grossman, yes.
Fulmer, yes.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn the public hearing, regular meeting, executive session, and move to council training session?
We certification.
We have to do the certification.
Have to.
That certification that we did-
Where everybody says that they talked about nothing in the executive-
That's what I just did.
We just did that.
Now, you just agreed to get back into open session.
Yeah.